Call and meeting back to order. Betsy, we call roll please.
Yes, I know that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Okay, thank you. First item we have tonight is approval of our agenda. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. Need a motion to approve the agenda as provided in your board packet tonight. The motion to approve that.
I move.
Thank you Steve, thank you Brandon. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And we have two items coming out of closed session tonight. Approval of two sets of closed session minutes. And those minutes were from September 30th, 2013, and December 16th, 2013. We've all had a chance to look at those. Need a motion to approve those minutes as presented in your board packet tonight.
I make that motion.
Thank you Linda. In a second please.
I'll see.
Brandon, thank you. And call and roll please.
Cap?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Dear Meyer?
Yes.
Weiselman?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Jesus?
Yes, thank you. Next we go down to communications. Our good news reports for tonight. Mr. Lee.
I'm getting more and more chances to do this. It's kind of fun to do this. It's my pleasure to announce as Board of Education into the Ball Chatham district that our cross-country coach, Mr. Mike Garber, was announced as the, or chosen as the Coach of the Year for Girls Class 2A Cross-Country for the Southern Division, and voted on by his peers from Illinois Crossing Coaches Association. Mike has taken over the program in a very short period of time, took a strong program and made it better. So what he's done is given us a lot of hope for the future. He took both teens to state this year, and of course, we look for nothing but great things from him. It's a well-deserved honor. I'd like to bring him up here to congratulate him.
You might have the LCD projector in your face. Do you want him to step out of the way of the LCD? There you go. There you go.
Let me hold this back. Thank you. Thank you very much. So this is the second time in only a few months I've gotten to speak to fine ladies and gentlemen on the school board. Let's keep the good times rolling with the news here. We had some fantastic opportunities for our girls and boys this year. I was recognized for the girls as the Illinois Cross-Country Coach of the Year for Girls 2A. And it was really, truly a humbling experience when I went to the clinic and I got the award and just being with all the rest of the coaches and knowing some of the coaches from the state of Illinois in the 2A division. I can't believe that it was me. I got the letter and I went to Dan Rourke and I was like, "Is this a joke? This can't be real." And he goes, "No, this is real." During the Mr. Lee and I said the same thing. I said, "Somebody wouldn't be playing a prank on me." Your head coach just couldn't be there. And it was, and it was fantastic. And we have a great group of kids. And I wouldn't be able to be getting this award or be where I am without them. And so really, the honor, as much as you could say it's mine, it's even more theirs because they listen, they do what I ask, they are always attentive, they always listen, they get good grades, they are fantastic kids. And you couldn't ask for a better group to be involved with than the Cross-Country Co-, than the Cross-Country Kids, both girls and boys. One quick anecdote or story. My very first day on the job, we're in cross-country practice, we're at the track, I send the kids on a warm-up. I don't have my phone on me or anything, and so they're out running around. I tell them to go around GES and it's, they're over there running around, they get back and they come and they say, "Listen, there's gates and there's all this stuff going on. What's happening over there?" I thought we were supposed to go around. I said, "Well, it wasn't all torn up before. Let's just come back, we'll get together." I see Jim in his car driving up along the football field and I'm like, "Oh, what's happening in his? This is not good." He goes, "Did you have your runners just run through a construction zone?" "I didn't do this on purpose. What happened?" He goes, "We can't have them over there." So I don't have my phone. I go look at my phone, two missed calls, a message from him. "Mike, what did you do?" And I'm like, "This is day number one. You gotta be kidding me." But obviously, fantastic on from there, but that was, hopefully next year we don't have that problem anymore. I did. You got it, you got it, Will.
There'll be no more construction over there next year.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, and to follow that up, we have some more good news. Our GMS eighth grade girls basketball team.
Yes, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. Normally, it would probably be Mr. Green, but he is supervising a game tonight. So I'm very pleased that I get to be the one to introduce Mr. Bill Clem. First, I would like to say a couple of things. When I would get to school early in the morning, the girls are in the gym and they're working really hard. And it's a great group. These girls took second in state, and I would like to congratulate them. They worked really hard, but they're a class act. And I would also like to say the same thing about the parents. Because when supervising games, it can be rather difficult when you have individuals that aren't practicing the best sportsmanship. And it was so, I had such pride saying, "That's Ball Chatham," because the fans were wonderful. And so, I appreciate that. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Clem.
It is a pleasure to be here. I echo everything Tina has mentioned about these young ladies. They're fantastic to work with. We had good times, we had a few bumps every now and then, but all in all, they were there bright and early in the morning. We had more morning practices at six probably than we did after school, to be honest. They came and worked hard, and their efforts have shown. In the last two years, those of you may remember that they were here last year and won third place this year. And their record over the last two years is 46 and 7. That's not a bad record for anybody. This year, we moved up one notch in the second place. Unfortunately, we lost to the same team three times. We took them to a championship game at Hillsborough, first year, or first tournament of the year, lost to them there, went to their place, lost to them there. When we got to the state tournament, we had a number of six games in a row puts us the number one team. So the pairings come out, and we're in the bracket with every team that's undefeated. We're the only one that has losses going into the state tournament. Well, these ladies avenged a loss to Morton last year, who was undefeated, they beat them. And Shanahan came along, and they were undefeated, and we beat them. But the last team that was standing was still undefeated when we played that last game. However, they knew they were in a game. The girls represented a community and a school very well, very much a class act. And I echo again about the parents. We did have an incident one time, did we not? It was a team that came to Budwood that they were a little rowdy at the end. Never on our parents' behalf, nor our kids' behalf, we talked a lot about good sportsmanship, and they were truly good sportsmen. Never, I mean, always proud of, honored to have been able to coach them, and look forward to them coming to the high school and playing up there. And maybe we'll be back at high school and bring a bigger one back. So with that though, there are five girls that can't be here because they're playing volleyball. When I get to their name, I'll let you know, and there's one that's whole mill with 102 temperature. Girls, if you just stand up and when I call your name off, you kind of face the audience here. Just stand up there and get in front like you did last year, recall? We'll have some certificates for you. Paige Beckerman, she is one of the young ladies that's playing volleyball. Lauren Beema is the young lady that's ill. Mackenzie Bray is playing volleyball. Hannah Brown is playing volleyball. Cecilia Kerr. De'ara Dammy. Haley Iceangle is not here, she's a volleyball player as well. Michaela Talaski is also a volleyball player. Alyssa Kinney. Sierra Lar. Rachel Layton. Madison Lieberman. Emma Speaks. Last but not least, Meg Weisman. Ladies, I congratulate you again on your fine season. It was a pleasure and I look forward to seeing you as you grow older. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, girls.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda topic under Communications. And that says an opportunity for, or this, there will be an opportunity here for the visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board concerning an agenda topic tonight? If not, we'll move on then. Thank you. First is our consent agenda, items 6-1 through 6-9. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything out of those for individual consideration? Okay, then I need a motion to approve our consent agenda items 6-1 through 6-9 as presented in your board packet tonight.
So we'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay, Rick and Brandon. Okay, and call and roll please.
Maddox?
Yes.
Dear Meyer?
Yes.
Weiselman?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Jesus?
Yes, thank you. We have, next is our personnel consent agenda items, and that is 7-1 through 7-20. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything off of there for individual consideration tonight? And I need a motion to approve our consent agenda item, personnel consent agenda items 7-1 through 7-20 as presented in your board packet tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Linda. In a second please.
I'll see.
Thank you. Lisa, and call and roll please.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Dear Meyer?
Yes.
Weiselman?
Yes.
Jesus?
Yes. Okay, and our next item is new business, and we are going to have a presentation tonight and...
Ryan, is that okay? Or you want him over?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ryan, do you want him over here? Is that okay?
I get to be on TV.
They like you to be on TV.
Yeah. I've only got five minutes, so I gotta rock and roll. My name's David Stuva. I'm President and CEO of Rural Electric, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and introduce myself and just give you a whirlwind view of what's happening. Rural Electric serves parts of five counties. We also have a nine-member locally elected Board of Directors. We buy our electricity from the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency in Springfield, the same place that the village of Chatham buys their electricity. I know there was some concerns that Rural Electric would randomly shut the school off and ask them to curtail. That is not the case. Our curtailment peak period is June 1st through September 15th. I put a letter out to Kerry and Dave Murphy basically saying, "We will not ask the intermediate or middle schools to reduce or curtail electric usage during school hours or any registration days through that June 1st, September 15th period." Since 2009, that's when we went with our new power supplier, we have only had five days we've asked for any curtailment, and it's typically from four to eight if it happens. We do have a non-interruptible rate, that's rate 11. I'd encourage the school to stay on the rate they're on because they're saving about $70,000 a year based on a non-interruptible rate. And really, it's no inconvenience, and I think with me working with Dave and communicating, I don't think there's going to be any problems at all. One thing we can't stop is unavoidable outages. Here's a car accident that happened in 2010. A combine caused an outage in 2012. One of the biggest outages that we had recently was the Groundhog Day blizzard. They said it was gonna snow. It snowed. One of the problems during that was prior to the snow, there was about a half inch of ice on the power lines. The wind really started blowing, causing them to gallop. That caused some outages and momentary blinks. Dave Murphy had to get some generators for the middle and intermediate school, and he stayed on those generators. I don't think you had class during that whole time period, but we were having blinks because of that ice, and it was not melting off of the lines. Here's a shot of the transmission line, basically south of Chatham, running down to our Glen Arms substation. We've been on Facebook since 2010. I'm the one that puts the posts on. If you want to see what's happening with Rural Electric, I'd encourage you to like our fan page. This year, on July 31st, happened in the night, there was an underground failure at the schools. Instead of just replacing, fixing the fault, we decided to put new cable in for the schools. And in the future, we plan even an additional tie line between the schools. The yellow part up there is the proposed and the completed project so far. We spent about $30,000 on that project, and it was built to the schools. There were a couple planned outages. They were one-minute transfer outages, one minute. And of course, we communicated with the school district and our other 1,000 members that are served off the same substation. We have two different ways that we can feed the schools. So if one transmission feed goes down, within a matter of minutes, we could be on another transmission feed. That's a big advantage. We took that week, replaced six poles in Breckenridge. We also had another one-minute transfer outage on December 3rd. We communicated with the school district and of course, our other 1,000 members on that sub. It was 6:30 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon, it was one minute. Once again, these outages are good because things are being repaired before they break down, and it's always better to do it that way. It's better to be proactive than reactive. We appreciate our relationship with the school district. We've had safety demos for eighth graders. We're willing to do that again. We've had an REC, CIMEA Energy Efficiency Grant that the school got. That was almost $21,000. We have more grant money available if the district is interested. I appreciate Dave Murphy talking about the energy efficiency upgrades at the schools with our board. We took the staff and the board on a tour. We stopped by the schools, had a little bit of a presentation. Since 1994, we've returned $38,000 in capital credits. And if you go to sporting events and see Rural Electric popcorn bags, they came from us. We have our annual meeting at the school. We used to be in the high school. This year, we had to go to the elementary school. Great facility. We really appreciate you guys renting that facility to us. Dave Murphy and Roger Carr always are very helpful. They do a great job. And occasionally, you'll see a board member pop in. And that's all I've got. That's a little intro of what we're all about.
Thank you very much. I know that it's always, it's been a major concern, obviously, as Dave and Kerry have mentioned to you many, many times about the, what outage does to us and our end of the equipment that you serve. And we appreciate anything you can do that you get to do.
We don't like outages. We don't like them any more than you do. Like I said, I promise we will do all we can to keep the power on. But I think the school district's really in a pretty good situation with our ability to actually feed from two different substations, a transmission line on the north side of Springfield, and we can connect to Amarin 69 transmission line that runs on Highway 104. So I think that gives the school a lot of protection for the big outages. When the ice storm comes through and takes everybody out, it's nice to have multiple feeds. I'm available. My email address is on there. Anytime you want to communicate with me, feel free to do so. And like I said, I am now the new spokesperson for Rural Electric with the school district. So I'll be doing my best to keep you guys informed. Thank you for letting me come.
Thanks, David. Well, don't forget your, do you have your, you got it? The one that was plugged in?
I got the flash rate too.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. I bet you didn't think I could do it in five minutes, did you?
That was impressive.
I could've ran a half hour really easy.
That was impressive.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, David.
Next, under old business, we have construction phase one and phase two updates. So Dave? It's basically dark tonight over there. No light.
You know, I think we just used to have that one out. That one's out too. It is dark.
That's okay. Let's see if you can see the screen. Place one down.
Yeah. I just wanted to take that one out.
Are you going to run it from board docs? You just need to go to explore down there at the bottom. There you go. And click on the right one. There you go. And then just go down one more. There you go. Perfect.
Okay, I want to talk for Corey Hope tonight. Give you the progress, current construction projects. We are within budget at this time. We're less than 1.3 change orders. 30 percentage. We're on schedule. Currently, we are applying finishes to all our additions. By being on schedule, we're looking at mid-April and, excuse me, mid-March in some cases, and 1st of April, mid-April, and in case of GES. And that really sums up our current construction projects. I'd like to move right into construction update.
I'll try to be very brief as well. Your colored handout sheet, one that you're used to, just a couple of quick items to mention on that. As David mentioned, overall change orders are less than 1.3% holding. We were able to add a couple more projects to this list. This time, there are a couple of masonry projects that completed, so they got shaded in that pink color. We're sitting on about 82% paid out for Phase 1. And as I mentioned, change orders are just almost 1.3% in holding. So things are looking real good. We're still tracking very well. The three additions that will be done either in March or April will probably end up on this probably in the May or June timeframe. There's a couple other ones that'll, as soon as the weather breaks, it'll allow us to get some of that work completed as well. So that's about it for the construction updates. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Can you tell me regarding the purchase of the furniture? When did that, when did you start doing that? Are you starting to look at options right now?
The district is handling that themselves, I think, in general. You know, we have it budgeted.
Right.
And if you look on the FFE column over to the right, you've only spent about $125,000 so far. And a lot of that is fire alarm and PA systems and things like that that Dave has contracted and paid for. The furniture, the total amount that we have budgeted for FFE is $369,000.
Right.
So we've got a long ways to go on that. Most of that's going to be furniture for the classrooms.
Okay, so the $369 includes some of Dave's things as well?
Yeah, the $369 is total.
Okay.
Of that $369, we've only spent $125 so far. I anticipate that you'll spend most all of that.
Okay. Now, I have a question to ask. And I'm just going to be really straightforward. Are we getting the Cadillac version of furniture?
No.
Good. Students are the priority, and I've already told Bullford and Principal Glen Morgan with GIS involved, that most of the offices will not, will be the same furniture they have right now. Okay. Now, what about the classroom furniture for the kids? I mean, we're going to have to put that up because it'll be over $25,000.
But we don't select the Cadillac.
It doesn't have to be...
We don't select the Cadillac, which we have.
Okay.
When we select furniture...
You're also going to empty all of our storage units. Okay, great.
When we select furniture, we typically look at a good, better, best. And the difficulty is you don't want to go with the lowest quality because they don't hold up very well. You know, especially with things like student chairs and desks. So you want to go to a quality that's enough that you will get several, you know, quite a few years out of it, but we don't go to the highest level of, you know, the nicest things out there, so.
Don't you imagine, though, that classroom furniture is going to be completely redesigned and different in eight years, 10 years? Maybe, maybe not. Okay, well, that's good to know because I don't want to spend any more than we need to on furniture.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions on this page? Now, we'll move on to the other sheet, other handout sheet, which is called Cost Summary for both of the phases, actually. Now, obviously, we've got a pretty good handle on the overall cost summary from Phase 1. And just starting at the top, this $15,414,000, we'll track to the construction update sheet. Included in that number, we are carrying $369,000. That's that FFE number that we were just talking about. And I fully expect that you'll spend most all of that. We are also carrying almost $800,000 in construction contingency, of which we've used to date, it says 169 or 161, but actually, we've spent 165 so far as a couple of real recent changes. That's under $200,000. I would not expect us to exceed $200,000 in construction contingency in Phase 1. We are carrying the $798 so far in the budget, but I, to be very conservative, I said we're only going to spend half of that, and that's $399,000, which gives back the district, you know, the other half of it. That puts Phase 1 at just a little over $15 million, which is kind of what the target has been all along. Realistically, I think it's going to be about 200 less than that because I think it's going to be more like 14.8. But that's, you know, I'm just trying to be real conservative with these numbers so that we don't overspend. If you take that another step further and you look at cost summary for Phase 2, none of these projects have been bid out yet, so these are not hard numbers. These are soft numbers. But if you go down through the list, you know, they show you a value of estimates that we're carrying right now for all of the different school locations and even a small amount for the bus garage. I think it might be some tree removal or so on. Now, all of those numbers include fees. It includes, they all include a total of about $1.5 million in contingency that we're carrying. It includes about $190,000 worth of asbestos abatement. It also includes about $390,000 worth of FFE for Phase 2. You know, there's more furniture to buy for the new classrooms, particularly the high school. You know, there's potentially 18 classrooms there. GIS is 10 or so classrooms, so we got to fit those out. David will have a lot of extra costs for fire alarm and PA systems and all the stuff that he does, he contracts out himself. So that's all included in there. So if you, and right now, we're projecting Phase 2 to be around $18.9 million roughly. And so that brings us to the changes, you know, that we've been talking about the past couple of months. One big item is the roof at GIS. You know, we talked last time about, you know, there's a lot more excessive wet areas on that roof than what we had originally anticipated to the tune of almost, you know, $9,000 or $10,000 more square feet. All of that because of the asbestos issue on the roof causes abatement, which is, which is a lot of extra cost. We were proposing to, originally, before we knew about all the extra wet areas, we were going to recote the roof. Because of all the extra areas, I know there's about another $150,000 that we have to add into that original budget just to cover the abatement of the wet areas. We cannot recote over wet areas, so we would have to cut those out. If we pulled that off and recoded it, you would end up with a 10-year warranty on that roof. If we tear it off down to bare metal, get rid of the asbestos, pay for the asbestos cost, provide new insulation, new roof membrane, all the way up. It's about an additional $100,000. $130,000 to $140,000. That's premium over and above, you know, the revised estimate that already added $150 in. The number originally, you know, a year ago, I thought it was going to be about a million dollars difference because we didn't have all the extra wet areas. It's come down. It's getting, you know, it's getting more reasonable, but still, an awful lot of money. But, you know, the thing to keep in mind now with a complete tear-off, you will get a 20-year roof instead of a 10-year roof. Either way, you will have a warranty for, the minimum would be 10 years watertightness. You know, we can't, we can't do all that work in that building and allow it to leak. And it is leaking now. If you walk through the building, there's buckets of things around that needs to be...
Let me just say this about that, Mike. What you don't know, and listen, we've talked about it here, since we were, we met last month, we found more leaks. I think we've got five new locations where there's leaking profusion. So in addition to that, that additional work for abatement, we're going to find that we've got more work for abatement because leaks aren't going away. What Mike suggested tonight is we've got two choices. One's a 10-year plan and the other one, our 10-year warranty, and the next one's a 20-year warranty.
Correct.
And what we're recommending tonight, the administration's recommending, that we go ahead and accept $840,000 in additional cost and bite the bullet and get the roofing completely replaced.
So what...
Abatement costs are never going to get any cheaper.
That tears off the entire roof of GES.
It tears off all of the 1976 building, not including the fieldhouse is a metal roof. That's not part of that. The 92, 5th Grade Wing, that can be a recover, a new membrane, rubber membrane, put over the top of it, just like we did Ball last summer, which is about half the cost of a tear-off. And there's only some minor leakage there that would have to be cut out. But what we're trying to portray here then is, if you look at these, what we're calling proposed budget revisions, if we start adding these extras in, where, what's the bottom line? Automatically, if we replace the roof for $140,000, the middle school entrance, which is already under construction, you have to do that. That wasn't in the original budget, but that's about $40,000, I'm told. You have to add that in. It will put you up to $34,800,000 roughly. David tells me I forgot an item. There's $40,000 worth of playgrounds that was approved at an earlier board meeting that I failed to include. So really, you know, 34,820 is where we are. But included in that is all of the, there's probably, well, I know there's 1.5 million of contingency that we have in unbid projects. Plus, I'm guessing there's going to be another $200,000 coming back from Phase One. So there's roughly $1.7 million included in that, you know, $34.8 million that's pure contingency. So, and taking it, and looking down the list, you know, we've talked at previous meetings about locker rooms at the high school, science classrooms at the high school, a smaller one, a photo lab revision at the high school. The district office, this building here, I just put a question mark. I know you've seen the numbers, or some of them are about $400,000. And the jury's still out on what's going to happen and when it's going to happen, so I left that one a question mark. The building committee, a recent meeting, we talked about adding some exterior signage for GES, as well as David's request for doing something with the storage building that's on the south end of Chatham. That's got some structural problems, so. You know, I came up with automatically about 1.5 million worth of proposed other revisions. If you add those into what we're calling Phase One and Phase Two, we are 35.4, call it. But again, there's a lot of contingency that we haven't spent in there. So we're just trying to, trying to paint a picture here for you of where we think we are. And again, you know, none of these Phase Two numbers have been bid. As we go through that process and accept bids and know what the actual numbers are, you know, that can be fine-tuned as well. So what we're really, what we're really saying here is, we would like the board to consider replacing the roof at GIS. We know you have to do the entrance, you know, at GMS, which is already under construction, probably nearly complete, as well as those playgrounds that you already are somewhat committed to, I guess, on previous meetings. That's kind of in a nutshell where I think we are.
So that's the additional work we're requesting for the summer. There's only really one project that we're going to talk about tonight, that's the $840,000 worth roofing at GIS. And then we're going to stop at that point and push everything else to 2015.
See how the bids come out, you know, see how everything plays out.
So you're saying the locker rooms, the science room will be pushed to 215? Is that what you're saying?
We're hoping the bids, now, this is all estimate at this time on Phase Two. So we're hoping the bids come in at or below. If they don't, if they come above, then we'll have to go through and prioritize this list and call it for 2015, based on the numbers that we've got left over. Now additionally, Mike did not talk to, you need to talk to generators.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
We kind of skipped over that. Remember when we approved Phase Two of two, three board meetings ago? One of the items we did not approve was the generators because there were some large numbers there. What we have been able to find is we need to buy two generators. We need to buy one for the high school that will replace the current generator because it, and we weren't counting on that. We were thinking that if we did not build the district office there, that we would not need a bigger generator. Well, the engineers tell me I do. So what we would do with the high school generator is, we wouldn't throw it away, we would take it to GMS. And there's a need for a new generator at GMS, so we, that generator at the high school currently is big enough to solve that need. GES is scheduled for a generator as well. So in effect, you're buying two generators and reusing one. What we had, what we had down, I think we had 700 and some, 780,000, I recall, with the generators, were a lot less, were about 480 now, where I think we are. Because our load at GMS went down and we are able to capitalize on reusing a generator that you already have, so.
Now, what that means for GMS is that that generator is only going to take up, and it'll only pick up half the building. It won't pick up the complete building. Science one won't be picked up, and 1957 additional. But the rest of the building won't be able to supply power to it with your generator taken from ice. Everything will be automatic transfer, so nobody has to plug a generator in. Power goes out, generator comes on.
There are some other items that I failed to mention also, the, as we...
Can we go back to the generators? I know one of the things when we were all talking in that building meeting, the thing that was upsetting us was because the impression was that we had to get generators because of Rural Electric's issue with providing us power. If they don't have an issue providing us power when we need it, where's the necessity for the generators?
It's the temporary outages. We're going to do file with education.
Well, we're going to, you're going to have testing. We're going to have like 40 days of testing now, the states require that each year. It's going to be all online. We can't have power outages. Any little flip, it's under the test.
To your data network.
Battery backup to the server space, it's only like 60 minutes. So if we get, we get an outage, they got 60 minutes for the server. Server time only, that's, that's not lighting, that's not HVAC, that's just servers, keeping the servers up.
And the servers at GES, isn't that right? Isn't that what the servers are?
We have GES, GHS, and GES.
GES and GMS.
The three, the three server areas are, now will have backup power in form of generate, power generation.
We got to save Chad Kent from, I don't know, sheer exhaustion. I mean, he, this is, I've changed my mind on the generators after talking to him. We just can't have him...
Can't go down. We can't keep losing power.
No, it's just too unfair.
Has this guy done what he says they can do? And when power goes down, he switches the feed and it's back up again?
They're talking about even, like, when you see the, you know...
That's, that's not a...
Combine running to the, you know, those kinds of things too?
Out to their switching station, make the switch. In the meantime, they've got to communicate with everybody. I mean, that's, that's half the process.
And this would even help, like, if he has a combine hit, a pole, utility pole or something. You know, if he has those issues too, you're going to go back online.
The other thing is the high school generator. That generator currently supports the health, life, safety in that building. When the power goes out, the emergency lights will run off of that generator, you know, for egress out of the building. All the life safety support systems in that building are on that generator. With the 25,000 square feet new addition we're adding to it, we thought we were going to be able to squeak by, but it doesn't work without an increased capacity generator in that school. That's where the thought of reusing that generator, because it's, what, 12 years old, at GMS, when it is big enough to take care of the need because we're not powering up the whole school.
So in essence, you're saying you would suggest generators, no matter who our provider of electrical service is?
Well, you know, we could, we couldn't leave the high school alone theoretically, but we would have to go to a different type of battery backup system for the emergency lights and exit lights and all the other...
I'm going to chime in on this because I have a little more engineering background on high school. We can't, we've got to have new wire bolts in the building. When the building was built, there were some oversized lines put in place, and we've got to replace some lines, replace some, we have to replace the generator, and we have to replace the feeds to the generator.
That's the right thing to do.
Well, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with generators if that's something we would do generally, but the way...
Don't do it because of...
I thought it was presented was that we were spending hundreds of thousands of dollars because Rural Electric couldn't get their act together.
Well, they only cover two schools, GMS and GES. They don't cover all the other schools.
Okay, all right.
You're right, that was one of the concerns at that time.
The way that came down was, we originally scheduled generators, but we didn't think we'd need as large a generator. And discussions with Rural Electric, not with Dave, with his underlings, they committed to, we needed, we needed backup power because what we were being told at the time, that they couldn't rely on their supplier for power consistently. That's all gone away now.
Okay. So is that some of our reasoning?
So we went from smaller generators, larger generators, now we're back to smaller generators, except at the high school where we found we've got a problem.
And the generator at the high school has been there since it was built? The high school was built?
Yes.
And is that the only one we have right now on our property? Is the one at the high school?
That's the only fixed generator. We got a smaller generator, then we'll run some small...
Run some diesel or something.
So in 12 years, do we have any data that shows how many times that saved us?
That generator?
Yes. I mean, how often does it come on in the case of an emergency?
Since I've been here, it's probably been on three times. But every time it's come on, correct me, Jim, it comes on, fails, shuts off. Comes on, fails, shuts off. There's too much of a load currently for that generator.
A year ago, they...
It comes on and fails, is that what you said?
Well, it can't handle the load.
It comes out, it handles the load, so it shuts off. So it goes bright for about 30 seconds and then it goes completely dark.
So it's worthless.
We dealt with this last year.
Yeah, it was, yeah, about a year ago.
So there was no emergency lights, nothing. It was pitch dark.
And that's a dark bed.
That's a function of the size of the generator, so.
How come Chairman Ball don't have a generator?
No servers.
No servers.
No servers, okay. Because they're at...
No servers.
Oh, no servers.
Run the whole...
Run the whole network.
What do you need to run the whole building for if it's just for tech?
It's not going to run the whole building, right? It's just emergency, exit, and server.
Server rooms, air conditioning for server rooms because you've got people...
Right.
It also takes care of your health, life, safety needs.
Just egress out of the building.
All your lighting, all your egress, all that kind of...
So in 12 years of having a generator at the high school, it's done nothing for us?
Yeah, probably three, three times in eight years.
But it's come on?
Yes.
But it's come on?
Yes.
And they're going to rock back off?
Yeah, we've had this problem since day one.
So can we make sure that as we get generators here, that they're...
They fit the need.
Well, I think that's, I think that's part of the problem too, that electrical needs in that building have...
True.
Have probably tripled since that building was built.
True.
With computers and with all, with everything that we've got there, that electrical, you know, the electrical load has...
Oh, I agree.
Yeah. So, and I don't, I don't know when it came on before, but, you know, it's basically an insurance policy too on these...
So if it hasn't run very much, it's probably in pretty good shape.
Enough for the middle school? That's a good question.
That's why we're using...
That's good news.
So then if we only have generators at buildings who have servers, there's, on this cost summary, there's generators for Glenwood or for Chatham, but there's not a server there at Ball, but there's not a server there? Is that for the health, for egress lights?
No server, dedicated servers at the other schools.
I think she's talking, the 384 and the 3226.
Mike, on this sheet, this is just other work. It's not generators.
It's other work.
Right?
Oh, oh, sorry.
For C and B. Chatham, Phase Two, Chatham Elementary and Ball Elementary.
Those are just Phase Two work.
Phase Two work.
Well, that's all, yeah, that's all the other Phase Two work. That's not generators.
Sorry.
Bathrooms, yeah, bathrooms and seal on the parking lot and all the other work. We just, we just broke it down by school, so you have an idea how much you're spending in that school. The long and the short of it is the generators, as we explained, the two new ones and the relocated one, that cost is also included. We included that in here, just to make sure we had the bases covered on that. Couple of other miscellaneous items, the science HVAC at the, at the middle school. We are now going to provide a new HVAC system that takes care of all of the science classrooms as opposed to just a couple of classrooms that would remain science classrooms and the rest would be regular classrooms. There's an increased ventilation load if we, if we maintain that. So we're going to put the proper equipment in that can cover that whole area. So these are just all costs that we're tracking so that we don't hopefully get fooled too much, you know, come bid day on this, on this stuff, so. Some TC means temperature controls at the intermediate school. David has the need to go around replacing some valves and so on and so forth that he doesn't have time just to have to take care of, so those are some other items like that.
So I'm really making my observations pretty early in the game, but I am not going to approve all of the projects on the proposed budget revisions. And here's why. Because even though we have $35 million in referendum bonds, we don't need to spend it all. And if we don't, if we save one and a half or $2 million, we don't include that as capital projects. That means that we get one and a half or $2 million back into our operations because we pay our taxes to the county, they take their money to make sure that we can make our bond and principal and interest payments, and then they give us what's left over. So I can just, I guess I'm really telling my colleagues that right now, even with the one and a half million in contingencies, I am at the point now where I think more, the most amount of money that we can forego on capital projects, we should, and we should direct those monies to the operations because...
He's only going, this is all that we're approving tonight.
No, I know. I'm just making these statements. I'm making these observations now.
Susan, that money cannot go anywhere other than to building projects. It cannot go to capital, it cannot go to...
I think she means...
No, no. Here's what I'm saying. Here's, here's how it works.
She wants to lower that point seven?
You basically take out a bunch of bonds. You pay your property taxes. You pay it to the county. The county takes all of that money and sets aside that required amount annually for us to pay our principal and interest. Okay? Then, whatever left over, that gets moved to our operations side. Okay, so the pot, the big pot includes operations money and principal and interest money. The less we, the less debt we incur on the $35 million, the more that comes back to the operations side.
When you say operations, what are you...
You don't include bond and interest levy when you do your levy?
Yeah.
So your levying is separate, that's automatically filled?
Right.
I know, but okay.
So it doesn't leave room for other areas? So it doesn't leave room for other areas?
Well, now...
It doesn't let you levy more in the ed fund? I think that's what, I think that's what your argument is.
But we've changed the levy on the ed fund. You can change the levy on it.
You can change the levy on the ed fund, but the bond and interest levy is separate. It's calculated separately based on your schedule, based on your bond schedule.
You can't mix the two?
Right.
Well, okay, but when the whole amount of money, that was, when the whole amount of money goes to the county carry to pay with the property taxes, they take out what we owe on the bond, principal and interest, correct?
They fill that automatically.
Correct, they fill that automatically, okay? So that's taken out and filled automatically. So where does the rest go?
I think actually really it would start at the taxpayer. If we don't borrow $35 million, it means that our taxpayers won't have as high of a, have a high of a real estate tax, so if...
It doesn't impact what we get, it impacts what they pay.
Correct.
But it's...
Okay, so...
What the taxpayers pay.
So the question at hand, though, is, I don't think, I'm not in favor of...
So the only way to do what you're asking to do is to say, if we would not sell all the bonds, which is what I think you're saying.
Correct.
So you would not sell all the bonds, you would not fill that ed fund, or that bond and interest levy, all the way to point 70, which is what we said we would maintain when we passed the referendum. So the only way to do what you're saying is to then pass an ed fund increase to the taxpayers. You would ask them to increase this, so that they're essentially paying the same bill, and then you just wouldn't sell all of these, but you would have to go out for a bond, for an ed fund increase, to be able to do what you're asking to do, which is to put this money into this fund.
Well, okay.
Because this is automatically filled, and then everything else is separate.
Okay.
What we levy.
Well, I appreciate that, and that's exactly what I would do. I would do exactly that.
For an ed fund increase?
I would say, would the parents say that they would want $234,000 for locker rooms, or would they want $234,000 to go to the ed fund?
But it can't go. If you, this money, this $35 million, the way the referendum was stated, it can only go to building improvements.
Correct.
It cannot go to...
But you don't have to spend $35 million, but then it goes back to the taxpayers.
That's what she's suggesting, right.
Well, it doesn't go anywhere.
Unless you go out for another referendum and ask for an ed fund increase.
Why would you do that?
That's what I'm saying, like, that's the only way to do what you're asking to do.
So you don't have to pay it back. Every dollar we don't spend, we don't have to pay back.
But you get, you go out for another referendum, I don't know, I guess, we were authorized to spend $35 million on these kinds of projects.
Now, it's sort of like your credit limit on your credit card. I have a $40,000 credit limit on my credit card. That's stupid. I'm not going to spend $40,000. Just because you have an authorized amount, doesn't mean that you need to spend all of the authorized amount.
That is true. But we have, we have projects out there that we're going to have to do sooner or later, so why wouldn't you do them with that, with that bond money that we've already been authorized to spend for these projects?
Well...
We've already, these are, these are projects that are going to have to be done sooner or later.
Well, you know what? That's it. Sooner or later.
But sooner or later is in the next couple of years, because if we add another, what's that, what do we, what do we program that that, or what do we...
That's your...
Estimate that, well, wait a minute, just a second, let me finish. What do we estimate that we're going to add for a new student capacity at that, at the new, at the high school?
At the high school, we're talking about as many as 18 classrooms, I think it's 450 students. That maxes out that building at about 18, 15.
Right. And right now, right now, they're saying that they need the more locker room space, because they can't accommodate all the kids, or it's hard to accommodate all the kids. You had another 1,800 kids in there, another 1,000 kids in there, and you still have a bigger problem, or you have a bigger problem then.
Well...
And, you know...
I guess we can agree to disagree.
No, we can't. We gotta, we gotta decide, we can't agree to do anything.
We don't have to agree.
We either agree to do this, or we agree that we're not going to satisfy the needs of this district.
Wait, why can't we agree to disagree, Jim?
Because that's just, that's a cop-out to me.
Well, okay.
It's not, we don't agree, I'm not agreeing that you've got the right point of view on it, so I'm not going to agree that...
Correct. We have a difference of opinion.
Yes.
So this ultimately, at some point, comes before the board for approval, correct?
Yes.
By project.
Yes.
Okay.
And we all have, there are seven individual board members.
Correct.
And we have seven votes.
And tonight, the only ones that you're looking for a vote on are the roof at GIS.
Right.
And not generators?
Generators are already planned.
They're already planned.
They're in phase two.
Right, they're in there.
So really, that's the one conversation.
And the interest, and the interest.
And you're waiting on bids for them.
And the interest.
But we approved phase two, less the generators, so technically we haven't approved those yet.
Okay.
Well, we got the money in it anyways.
I think you're right.
The money's there.
Right. You guys just need to say yes or no.
The amounts of money that we needed, based on what we really needed for servers, or to manage the servers, and what REA gave us some information. We heard tonight, we don't need the large generator sets, we can go with smaller generator sets. It fits the budget. So now, tonight, we're, the only thing we're asking for is that we replace the roof at GIS rather than recode the roof at GIS. Recoding means 10 years, replacing gives me 20 years, gives us 20 years.
I think the timeframe, I think the timeframe is relative on that. We're going to have to replace it sooner or later. And you either push it down the road, and let boards in the future, five, five years in the future, or 10 years in the future, figure out that we still have that asbestos there. As you said, those costs are not going down for abatement. And we still continue to have the leaks in, you know, you were just saying, you and Liz had found five more leaks in it, and that's just been, probably since it started thawing out again. And, you know, it's, it's, it's going to continue, you're going to continue to find those and just have more and more stuff that you have to do on an emergency basis, and that's not the way to handle it.
So we're really, I mean, I think we have to replace the roof, but if I'm not mistaken, we also should approve the Glenwood Middle School entrance.
Which has been approved.
That's been approved.
It's already been approved.
So the only thing we're asking for you tonight is to replace the roof at GIS, that's our recommendation.
And replace the roof is $840,000. Is that an estimate, or is that...
It's an estimate.
Okay.
So are we actually making a motion to go to bid?
To go to bid.
Go to bid, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to go to bid to replace the roof at GIS.
And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Morely?
Yes.
Mrs.?
Yes, okay.
And information that is generated from the bids for the roof, but also for the cost summary above on our chart, will help us make a decision as to what we need to approve on the last part of the proposed budget revision.
That's what we recommend, we can wait and see.
And I agree, we, you know, we should be approved, we don't have to spend everything, but yet if there are things that we have to spend, now is the time to do it. So it'll be interesting to hear what the results of that would be.
At one point, you had mentioned that we had, and I don't know if you and Mike had put that number together, that we had more like $40 million or $41 million that we probably should do, but we've tried to pare that down to meet the 35?
It was $47 million worth of...
Okay. I remember there was a 40...
Project work that was identified.
It was more than what we were going to be able to spend. So you have pared that down. It wasn't just, like, we've got 35, so let's figure out how to spend it, it was, we have a need, and we had to pare it down, is what I, I thought I remembered.
That's correct.
From when we went to referendum.
Right.
You will always have need. Example, the high school roof, that building's what, 12, 13 years old now?
Right.
Probably got a 15-year roof on it.
It goes out of warranty next year.
Right. So we're not just spending it to spend it, we're prioritizing needs, which is why we may have to take off things such as, you know, the photo lab revision may not be a need, it's just a want, and we may have to take that off.
Correct. Well, the construction committee is actually pairing these things, prioritizing these to bring forward to work.
Right.
Good thing to bring up. This is not the whole discussion. The construction committee has discussed this a lot.
We've been through this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Many eyes.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, moving on to new business. We have our postponed from an earlier meeting, and postponed again from Monday night.
I was beginning to think you guys didn't want to get in.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I will keep this short this week, I've got a little problem with my voice, so I'll try to not talk and just answer the questions, but...
Can you have a timer?
Okay, and I have a timer, so...
There's your timer, right behind you.
Betsy said you can run it from there.
You can just click on the board docs tab. That's fine. You can add that one, and then just move down one more, there you go. And then just...
That was impressive, yeah.
The date when I originally sent it was good, and it's been updated a couple of times, but it does reflect the wrong date.
Really, the first, the first few slides, I know you guys have seen this, so it's just, it really is just informational. Age of the fleets, you know, what we have as far as buses and vehicles and that kind of thing. I did put some values on fleet cars, I think that was one of the discussion topics that we had had before, was, you know, do we continue to utilize fleet vehicles, or those kind of things. Did the same thing with our vans, showing, you know, the age of those, what, basically just went on, went out on the internet, got an average value for them, so that's just ballpark values of what those, what those vehicles might be worth if we tried to, tried to trade those off for something else or sell them. Highlighted this in yellow, there's several, several slides right here together. Some questions come up about why, why a big drop, and then, and then all of a sudden the jump. And really, the 11, 12, primarily, we had some reduction in routes, as you recall, we consolidated some routes. We also were still going through negotiations, so there weren't any salary increases that year, and then they were retroactive, actually, in the 12, 13 year, so it was, it was sort of a combination of some reductions, for the reductions in 11, 12, but also the fact that we didn't have any salary or benefit increases because of the negotiations for the conflict.
Just analyzing that.
That really covers those, those three slides. The rest, really, are just mileage comparisons from year to year.
Include...
Yeah.
It could look...
There was some question about the special ed transportation, and why there was such a big drop in the mileage there. We actually had, back in the 11, 12 year, we utilized several of our white vans, we actually had two drivers that drove basically all day, every day, taking students to and from work-study programs, in addition to our regular transportation. But that added a lot of mileage to our, to our special ed claim. In the 12, 13 claim year, we actually started utilizing the Noel Pavilion, and so, for the most part, not all of them, but the majority of our students went to one location. And that program has, has proven to obviously reduce a lot of our transportation costs. And so that's, that's where the primary drop in that is. And we have a fluctuation in the number of students from year to year, that's going to go up and down. Students that move into or out of the district, we can't ever tell, but that's, that's the primary reason. Really, the same thing here with the field trips, we're not providing most of that transportation The non-reimbursable field trip miles, utilizing, and that's primarily the co-curricular athletics and that kind of thing, that's, that's what falls into this category, and we've continued to try to monitor this, manage this to, to reduce that, because for every one of those miles that we travel, there's, there's no reimbursement. The pre-K, that primarily is just an increase in the number of students going to the pre-K Roof areas, that's same things that we've seen in ongoing, the new Avonell subdivision, the Savannah Point has added a whole section to the, to the west, actually two, two more drives. South Park's not really taken off, but it's, we expect it, within the next year or so, that they'll also start seeing a lot of roof just south of the Village Park. Some cost savings ideas that we've kicked around, some of them in the past, to do some additional staggering of the, of the start and exit times for schools. It's not very popular, but adding some, some more stagger to the, to the starting times may, may allow us to align all three elementary schools with the same start time. We're right now, the GPS is the 8:30 start. It would probably mean some adjustments to the high school start time, which I know is very unpopular, but most cost-saving ideas are unpopular, so we get used to certain The other one is, you know, the other big ticket item is the transportation of those that live in a mile and a half from school. Could be a $50,000 to $75,000 of your savings. There's a little bullet that says it will only affect Chatham. Of any significance, there could be one or two tight court, you know, for example, at GES, if they finish that sidewalk on the north side, then that would also be students that would be affected. But all of the other schools primarily have a hazardous route, either right in front of or right next to, so primarily, it would really only affect Chatham. There could be a couple of others. Reducing bus purchases, allowing the fleet aid, which we have done, some of, reducing the number of bus routes by combining them, that would probably have to go hand in hand with additional staggers, but we could do that. Could be longer ride times for students, not very popular, especially in some of the weather that we've been having. Using alternative methods for transferring some of those non-reimbursable field trips. Reducing extra miles, distance to those athletic trips, we've done it on field trips, some of those kind of things. For the most part, it's, there aren't a lot of significantly long trips, especially with our conference. Where we're located, I mean, all the conference trips are 30 miles, probably in any direction, so there's not a lot out there. I mean, we had a total of 45,000 of those miles, but that includes field trips and athletics and so on, so there's just not a lot out there. Some, some issues that we're facing now, and that are coming up. A lot of the districts are having a difficult time finding drivers. Ours continues to, I mean, I drove a bus three days this week, we're down to not having, we just don't have substitutes, for a lot of different reasons. We used to be able to attract a lot of drivers from, from different areas, because of what we were able to offer, both salary and benefits. And with those changes, you know, we're still putting ads in the paper, we're still going online and doing those things, we're just not able to attract the drivers. So we're finding it more and more difficult to attract qualified people to come drive school buses. And we do have, as I mentioned before, we've got a couple of buses that really need to be replaced. We've got a wheelchair accessible bus that, it's a 1999. It's backup, but it's not a great backup, but if we had to have one, we could use it. The rest of our wheelchair buses are on Route 7A. And we've got another one that's had a problem with the engine, that's, that's not usable in any fashion at this point, so we've got a couple that we really could stand to replace. Just some information to go along with what I was talking about, drivers. You look at the five schools, this is our starting salary for a school bus driver as compared to other districts in the county. This is what we do with our subs. Right now, we pay them on a per-roupe basis. And figuring about an hour and 45 minutes per route, morning or afternoon, it equates to about 14 hours and 25 cents, which means if I got a brand-new hired driver and a substitute driver, the substitute actually makes more money. We've had a couple of substitute drivers opt not to take a permanent route and actually left the district because they were going to have to take a cut. So there's, that's just information for, you know, how, this is just a combination of the two. This is, sort of reflects what I was just telling you. And this is actually a report from, Patrick sent this to me, and I don't remember exactly if it was, I think it was from the ROE. But it just shows the districts and what the cost per mile for just regular transportation is. And you can see, we're sort of top five, top four, and just below the county average for cost per mile. So we're pretty solid in that respect, and again, that fluctuates every year. Questions?
I have a question. Can you tell me, I know that this comes later in your request, but what's been your experience of purchasing new versus used buses? I mean, for example, a new bus is about 85, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
A non-handicap, just a regular.
And then to get a good used bus, it's, you know, I guess you review the maintenance records and things like that. How much is that? How much would that be?
We've never purchased a used bus. Never purchased a one-year-old bus. We've never done that. That is actually the recommendation for this year. The difficulty that we faced is, it's very difficult to find, just like going out and buying a used car. You can't quite find that one that has all of the needs that you, all of the ones that you have. So we've not done that in the past. But from a cost perspective, we've talked with a couple of our bus dealers, probably somewhere between high 60s and mid 70s.
How many miles on the bus?
I mean, most of them are going to be one-year lease buses that fleets will have, districts will use a one-year lease, and they just roll their fleet over every year. I don't really have a lot of experience with what those are. You know, we average 6,000 to 7,000 miles a year on a bus. There are fleets that average 15. So depending upon where that bus comes from, if it comes from St. Louis, it could have a lot of miles, to Peayton, Peoria, it could have fewer miles. It really just, there's a lot of variables, just like when you're out at a used car shop and you can, in line I can guarantee it'll be yellow. I mean, other than that, I mean, it may not have all the equipment that we used. For example, I mean, we always, when we buy new, we always put the second heater, the mid-range heater, on the buses. We found that that creates a lot more comfort on the bus, except, and see, we're agree with her. But, so we've done that for the last seven or eight years. We put a mid-range heater in there. We may not find a bus that has a mid-range heater that is on our price range that has all of the other elements. And that will just be some of the things that we might have to give up.
So my question is, let's say we wanted to, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out the cost benefit of buying a one-year bus that might not have, you know, exactly what we're looking for. And maybe getting, rather buying a new bus, but it doesn't have all the bells and whistles that we once had, like no mid.
Mid-range heater?
No mid-range heater. And maybe there are a few other bells and whistles that we could eliminate. And maybe with the combination of some of those recommendations to, for example, reduce the number of non-reimbursable miles in any which way that you think possible. Would that get us to, you know, the purchase of a new, more simplified bus? And do you think that's more meritorious than buying a used bus and keeping a lot of these extracurricular miles on the books?
That's, I mean, that'll be the process that we walk through, is comparing, you know, the new bus and prioritizing. We don't get a lot of options on our brand-new buses. And there are some, clearly there are. The mid-range heater, you know, we felt like some of that is a priority, because without them, you get the windows ice up, and it's sort of in the middle, and you get, I mean, so there's some benefit to any or all of the options that we put on them.
Right.
And we can certainly prioritize that and try to figure out whether the value's, you know, worth, the value of what we get is what we pay for. I'm pretty convinced that buying a one- or two-year-old bus is probably a more economical way to go. But again, you have the potential of, you have potential of some problems.
What about a warranty, or, you know, stuff that would be covered on a used bus like that?
Typically, even if the bus is traded or leased, you typically get a five-year warranty, you know, on everything. And if we bought a two-year-old bus, then we're going to have the remaining three years.
But, I mean, maybe we should turn off the camera on this, but have we gotten rid of a couple of two-year-old buses that were just chronic problems and went back? And who knows what happened to them after that?
That is correct.
Yeah, I remember that.
With Mercedes engines. Which is not a, it was, they got rid of the Cummins and they didn't offer anything else. And not to be mistaken, that we bought that Mercedes in the bus line.
Excuse me, but you may not turn off the camera.
I was kidding. I was kidding. I was kidding.
Who knows?
Brian's not going to turn off.
Jim knew I was kidding, because we've, I mean, we've traded in some buses that were chronic problems, and somebody else got them.
Maybe.
I'm sure you guys have looked at this, but I'm the newbie. So in terms of, you know, when you keep vehicles, as long as it seems we keep them, leasing's usually not the greatest thing. But what, how would leasing pan out if you realize you're turning your fleet over more often with potentially less mechanical issues and repair? I know.
Can I address that?
Yeah, absolutely.
A few, and I don't remember exactly when it was, but it might have been back in the early 2000s. We had, we, the board set out a policy that we would, and I don't remember exactly what the timeframe was, but we would have no buses that were older than 10 years, was it?
It was 2002.
2002. So the board did that. And for a number of years, that's what we did. If the buses aged out of the fleet, if we had five buses that were over 10 years old, they'd age, I think we had a maximum on it. Didn't we, like, three or four?
About that time, we had about 48, 49 buses. The math was pretty easy, that basically you were going to replace, you know, basically we would replace five buses.
But I'm talking about leasing, not buying.
But that's the same type of thing. I mean, we had.
It's the same concept, but.
Same concept.
If you roll them over.
Well, what happens is, right now, we have, when we purchase the buses, we have the equity in the bus.
Right.
When you lease, if you went to a completely leased fleet, you would recognize, that basically, they would come in and they would buy all the buses. And the first year, you would recognize that income. And we would put that on our claim. After that, you would have a leased fleet. And if you, it's easy to go from owning to lease, but with the size of our fleet, we could probably never go back because of the sheer cost of.
Buying all those buses.
Because you would go back to buying buses, and you certainly wouldn't buy the whole fleet, so you'd end up in a cycle, you'd have to start buying.
Are you talking about just leasing a couple? Is that what you're?
No, I don't know any of the options.
Instead of the whole fleet, I think, what about just a couple?
Whole, I don't know. I mean, when you lease, you know, I don't know if leasing works different, but with the vehicles, when you're done, you turn it in.
Right.
And you start over. The cost is virtually continuous with some changes in it, so your budgeting's there. But, you know, when you keep a vehicle, as long as we potentially do, there's not much equity left when you're done, either.
Well, the lease program is either a one, three, or five-year. There's, that I'm aware of, there's no 10-year program. Basically, it's a one, a one, three, or five-year lease program is what you'd get into. And yes, I mean, I've had some discussion with some of the salesmen and those kind of things about, you know, the pros and cons, and there's some benefits. But the downside is, you know, you recognize that income that first year, but then it's gone. Then you don't have it. You don't have the asset. It doesn't belong to you, it belongs to them. And you roll it over every year, every three years, five years, whatever the program is. But the payments are pretty steep. And I could get, I wouldn't have to get math and.
I was just curious. And that's something maybe I can just talk to you about.
And I could.
Just for information.
I'll be glad to.
Do you know of any districts that have a full lease on all their buses? Is that a common thing?
Lease versus contract. I'm absolutely certain that I do, but I can't think of it.
But I mean, there are districts that do that. That don't own any of their buses, they just lease them every year.
More typical for a small.
It's either really small or really big fleets. We're neither, we're sort of in the middle. I don't think Rochester does.
Just something that maybe you could look at.
Yeah, people have to check it out.
Give us more info.
I'd be curious if the three that were lower than us on there were leasing, if that was.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Could you look at?
Driving their cost down.
That's a good idea.
Because we're in a good spot here.
See what?
Now, when you say cost per.
I know the word. I'm about 95%.
Cost per mile, yeah.
When you say cost per mile, are you just looking at just maintenance and fuel and that sort of thing?
Cost per mile, the way that we calculate it is total all-in expenses versus total all-in miles. And this is just regular transportation, and I'm not sure how their calculation is. Ours is pretty close to theirs. I think ours is 267 to 268.
Well, it's coming from your claim form, so.
Right, but just regular miles, and I don't know what they're, I don't know what expenses they've taken.
Okay. But it's apples to apples, since it's all off your form.
Yes.
So maybe we could, that's a good idea, to look at some of the lower cost and just see if, maybe there's some reason.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. I think you're staying up there, though.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, next item is permission to seek bus bids. So I think that the.
Having just said that we need a couple. And what I would like to do is, I would like to seek bids for a one-year-old bus. And that's would be my plan for a one-wheelchair and one 71-passenger. And then that's what I would like to do. Obviously, prior to doing that, I will do some homework with our salespeople, find out what they have available. I had talked to one salesman early, early in December, and they had a bus, they could have delivered in December, had we had the need, with payment not coming until July. And pretty much met a lot of our specs. Certainly not all of them. I hadn't looked at it, didn't see it, don't know what kind of condition it was in or anything, but they're out there and they're available. So what I would like to do is just get permission to go ahead and bid for a one-year-old bus for each of those. And if something in the homework changes, then I will come next month and update you and change the bid if we need to do that.
This would be a wheelchair-accessible bus?
Yes, one wheelchair-accessible bus and one 71-passenger bus.
Any questions?
Seeking a bid doesn't mean that we would.
No, seeking a bid is just what it is, seeking a bid. And we come back and, you know, it could be, we could not accept the bid, just like we've done before. So that's all it is. There's no questions. I need a motion to approve the Director of Operations to seek bus bids for a, two one-year-old buses, one wheelchair-accessible bus and one conventional 71-passenger bus. Thank you, Brandon. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Call the roll, please.
Carter. Yes. Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes.
I'd just like my comment before I vote on this. I think that one of the things we need to do is to make sure that, no matter what bus it is, if it's a, if it's a used bus or a new bus, that it has to meet school safety standards first. We have to make sure it's safe for our students and that it's the best for our students, so, because that's what it's all about. It's not about whether we can save money on a bus or, you know, we want to get a used bus or a new bus. It's got to meet the standards that we set as a district for our student safety. And I'll vote yes on that. Okay, thank you, everybody. And next, Jim, seek bids for mechanical supplies. This is a yearly thing, right?
Yes, sir. As we've done for the last several years, we bid our commonly-used mechanical supplies from, you know, filters to, gosh, lights and lenses and those kind of things. It's most of our commonly-used mechanical supplies. We put the bid out, we usually put the bid out in between March and April, and I would bring those back to you at the June, maybe the May board meeting, because we try to give our vendors, we're bidding in January, not knowing what the prices were going to be in July. So they sort of push back and ask that we can bid later in the year, but because our meeting was always in January. So we won't actually bid probably until April, and you would expect, I would expect to give this back to you either in April or May, once we did the bid. So at this point, I'm just looking to bid mechanical supplies.
Any questions? Need a motion then to approve authorization for the Director of Operations to request bids for mechanical supplies.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. And a second, please. Right, thank you, Brandon. Call the roll, please.
Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Tiarra.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes.
Carter. Yes.
Yes.
Jim, before you sit down, I had to prolong this, but you'd mentioned something about finding it trouble getting drivers. Do we have a plan for that?
Yeah.
Or is it?
That's something I was talking to Teresa about, too, is that can we, you know, call on Lincoln Land or, you know, we put some ads out in paper, you know, for subs, and I think, I can't remember if it was just subs that we put in the paper, in the Clarion, or drivers, too.
Drivers, I think.
And then we had talked about maybe calling Lincoln Land to see if there's a possibility, which I don't know if you, just trying to up our recruitment efforts, too, if you know anything about it.
But it's normally never been an issue, correct?
It's always been sort of an ongoing.
There's turnover.
Right. And it's one of those things that, we've had a group that's been with us for quite a while, some of those have expressed that, you know, they plan to re-retire.
Re-retire.
We had one this month, I think.
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, it's sort of an ongoing, it's just, we're having more difficulty, you know, attracting people to come and apply.
But you said all districts are having issues.
Yeah, we are. And I mean, you see the things in the paper. I mean, there's just an article in the paper this week on the front page, you know. 12 calls about that. And I mean, it's not us. I mean, so, we do have a plan. We work with the regional office, they offer bus driver training. I just was talking with Iowa today. They have another trainer. We actually have one in our district that works, you know, for our district. Those aren't part of her requirements, she just happens to be employed by our district, but she's also a state-certified trainer that can provide the class. but she's also a state-certified trainer that can provide the class. So, we had class on Monday, we had four people signed up, and we had two show up. At this point, I'll take 50%. But we're, we're going to continue to work with ROE, with Lyle, and so whenever we offer a class, we're going to share with him. A lot of times, he has people in the lean waiting to drive. Usually, it's for a specific district, sometimes it's just in general. So, if we can, if we can provide the training, get them into our facility, and recruit while they're, while they're in class, sometimes we can do that.
You mentioned that you stepped in and drove several days. Are there others available on the, on a call that you have?
We, we have a few, that, we have a couple of our maintenance people that actually were driving buses in the past, that when it gets to the dire emergency and I'm driving and there's still a need, Barry Woodward is a, is a driver, he's, he's one of our maintenance staff. We work with Dave, and we don't call him unless we have to, and so, it's one of those things that when we get, when we get down to that point, we just, we use, you know, all hands on deck, we develop some routes, and we, we're juggling a lot. This year, probably more than any other year, we've got about four or five of our subs that all went, you know, out of state for the winter, which is pretty unusual. But, you know, it's, it's sort of one of those perfect storm things where they, their timing all over laughed away. And, I mean, with, with subs to drivers, it's, it's pretty hard to tell them I can't go, because then they say, okay, well, that's, that's what worked.
Then you'll rehire them when they get back, right?
It's okay, just curious.
Okay, now, we, it's not very far from my mind ever, so we, we work on it on a rate.
What am I going to do when I retire?
Thanks.
Long list of them to do. Okay, next, we have, where am I here? This is for, now, Betsy, I think, and are you?
Obviously, due to the induction.
Okay, and this is for, this is for a new mobile, Volchatam mobile app.
Yeah, we've been working this for a while, and it's, it's kind of grown from, starting in, actually, in our PBIS meetings with Mr. Hay, Mr. Moore, talking about some things we can do to, you know, reach the kids better, those types of things. One of the original things that came out of those meetings was to put together some student advisory groups, and so, Mr. Hay kind of ran with that, and they met regularly. He ran those meetings, and there are a lot of good ideas that came from the students throughout that. And one of the main ideas students came back with was improving communication, and what they would like to see is an app, a school app, because they're all carrying their phones around with them, they use apps every single day, and so, they'd like to see a Volchatam app. And then we started hearing more from parents about the possibility of an app. So, we started looking at some different things, and some of the options out there were to create our own, and I know Dan Lund worked on one for a while, and the problem with that is it's going to be pretty time-consuming for whoever's going to maintain that app. And then we said, there was the possibility of a free app through one of our, our vendors, but it wouldn't integrate with Skyward, and I think this will be one of the key components of an app that we absolutely, it's kind of a deal breaker. And then, we got Betsy involved, and we started talking, and she started dealing with School Messenger, and we think we found something that, that might be pretty accessible, so I'm going to let her kind of take.
School Messenger is the, is the service provider we use for emergency callouts, and we've been on board with them for years. As Jim said, you know, there are many apps, we looked at many different vendors who would offer free apps, free to the district, free to parents. The problem is, they, they didn't integrate with Skyward, and I thought that that's absolute, that is one of the things we absolutely need to have, is the gradebook available and also the availability to go online and pay for lunches or whatever. And this, this one offered by School Messenger, because they are a student information systems, oh, there's my phone, or SIS business partner with Skyward, they integrate seamlessly. We can go to Skyward, Skyward actually has a mobile app, but it doesn't allow you to go through and get lunch payments through RappTrack, where this app would connect you right with Skyward, the actual full site, so you could go on to your own, you know, your kid's gradebook, or, or to pay for lunches, or to pay for registration fees. So, I thought that that was an absolute benefit. One of the other problems with School Connect or some of those others that are free is that they run advertising, national advertising at the bottom that you can't control, and you can't have a say in what's running at the bottom. Also, they didn't allow you your own, I guess, look, your own, you know, on apps, it would have like a little signpost that says School Connect, well, what is that, that doesn't say Volchatam to me. Ideally, and this wouldn't have been a deal breaker, but I want my own logo, you know, my own identification on an app, ideally. If that would have been the only thing that would have kept me from saying, oh, this is, this is a product that's going to cost 50 cents basically for a full-time student annually or free, then I probably would have gone with it. The whole thing that was the deal breaker was Skyward and the ability to run with that. And also, School Messenger came out and said, well, you know what, we have this push notification system, which I thought was another integral piece, because they can granulate down to not just for parents to choose emergency notification, but you could even sign up to say, you know, I want to know when jazz band practice is going to be, I want to know when camp, you know, football practice is going to be cut short, or whatever, and you can get push notifications on every single thing that we, we do here in the district as long as we get it set up that way. So, I thought that was a pretty cool feature, too, another way to communicate better with our parents about what's going on. So, in talking with School Messenger's people, it does come to 50 cents per full-time student, or for us right now, about $2,270. And so, I guess I am asking for approval tonight for us to proceed with this. It would be a one-year subscription, a one-year lease or a subscription, I guess is how they characterize it. It would take them about a month to six weeks to develop it for us. We would get to review it before it goes live. It would be free to parents. And, you know, I just think it's one more tool in our toolbox to communicate better in a way that I think most people are, you know, as we are seeing more and more, a majority of people carrying smartphones, and I know a lot of our students would appreciate it for athletic schedules and other, other things as well, so.
Who may come to?
School Messenger does. That's part of the cost each year. And even though it would be great to have our kids do it, and they've offered to do one, they graduate, they don't, they wouldn't be able to maintain it as a role, not as easily as we're paying somebody to do it, so. I thought it was a pretty custom, you know, effective way to, a better way, maybe, for a lot of parents to, to get a lot of the functionality that we have on our website. It also is all web-based, so as long as our website's up and working, and whatever website, web service provider we use, it'll connect to that, we just, it's, it's something that they, we pay for for their maintenance.
Betsy, if we were going to log in to Skyward, you know, is it, is it like Facebook or something that once you log in and it's on your phone, you don't have to log in every time, because, you know, I'll be talking with girlfriends, and they talk about trying to access their kids' grades on their phone, and they're trying to, you know, enter their Skyward?
It, it's a button on the app, you go to the app, and then they have several buttons that you can access, from athletic schedules to lunches, lunch menus to, and Skyward is one of those buttons, so you push on that. And because I, I want the full site, they could also link to just the mobile site, which to me isn't as functional as a full site, because you want to be able to pay, like, for me, as a parent, I want to be able to pay for lunches on my phone. So, basically, it'll take you to the full site of Skyward. It kind of logs you out, if you will, of the apps to get you to Skyward, so you'll just have to X out and go right back to the app, if that makes sense.
So, in other words, you do have to enter in your full Skyward information in every single time?
As far as I can tell, yes. Now, that, I couldn't be mistaken, as they developed this for us, I can ask that question.
That may be a security issue, too.
It's one of the reasons the other companies couldn't access Skyward, because I guess there's something on the backend, on how they, how, every time you log in, it creates a new field of some sort, and, and because this is a business partner, they're able to kind of remove themselves from that, and it goes right to it, but it does take you from that app to Skyward itself. So, it's possible that you would have to log in each time. At least you wouldn't have to go to the website, though.
It's a Skype, yeah, the Skype app, there's a four-digit password.
You can't get to the pages in the website from a phone.
Right.
Right.
Which is annoying.
Betsy, the Johnsburg, that was School Messenger.
Oh, yeah, I talked with those folks, the information technology director at Johnsburg, who had nothing but little reports about School Messenger.
Yeah, and I downloaded their app, and I had to get on today because we were talking about this this evening. I hit the Skyward link, and, yeah, you had to log in, which I think for Skyward in the sense of information, it's probably not, probably not a bad idea.
I have a similar app that they have for us to do our callouts, and it is extremely easy compared to what we used to do on, they're same, you know, system, but online, and it's just, it's so easy, it's so intuitive. It's, I would imagine that it's very similar to that, don't you think that's?
Yeah, I would think so.
Compared to the.
Another thing that I'll add, though, it's right now only available for Apple and Android platforms. But I think, as this grows and develops, that you might see other platforms, but right now, those are the only two, for iPad, iPod, and, you know, and then Android devices.
We could push out important forward.
Absolutely.
To the community?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. It even, they even went so far, because we really would like to have this be almost community-minded, to have our own page with links to the village, you know, website, Chatham Community Library website, all those types of community-type things, and, and they would build that for us. They actually said they've never had anybody ask for that, but I thought it would be a nice feature to.
Sure.
Push out five essentials? It would satisfy one of our goals of.
You're good.
Yeah, the push out is voluntary. They sign up.
You have to sign up.
Who they want to get push outs from.
And from each school.
Which is helpful, too.
You don't have to have a push out from every school. You know, you can sign up from every school or, or from the district office, so.
I think it sounds well worth, well worth the money, and just, I mean, I've had conversations with people, and they'll say, well, I didn't know about that. Oh, how could you not know about it? It's every, this is one more place.
One more way to get information.
One would always log into the website.
No.
Are there any other schools in the area that have their own app?
There are a lot in Illinois. I don't know about locally, I've not heard of any locally, so this would be something.
I haven't either, but.
I don't know, they could be looking at it, maybe 186 has it, I just don't know. But I know in Illinois, this is a big, School Messenger is pretty popular in Illinois because Skyward is, is pretty prevalent in the Midwest, so we see a lot of Illinois districts that have it.
Any other questions? Anything, Jim, or Betsy did? Nothing?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Volchatam mobile app.
Thank you, Linda.
Subscription.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Steve. And call the roll, please.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
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 Thanks, Jim.
Can they shorten that up from a month and a half to next week or something like that? Supposed to be some more snow this weekend.
We really use that.
Oh, yeah.
It's a four-letter.
Okay, next item, first reading of some policies from the ROE.
Two of these policies finish our ROE compliance. Mrs. Carter, Mrs. Worley reviewed them, actually via email, and said, we'll have to meet. And the other two were just, we've never had language on what we allow students, when we take students to places and we need to feed them, and so, we have mirrored the language with whatever we reimburse our teachers and staff for, for student meals. So, we put it in both places, so we have it in two different places in policy. So, we're seeking approval for those.
Questions or comments? Okay, need a motion then to approve the.
Information.
The, I'm sorry, first reading. Information only, you're right, you're right. I'm getting a month ahead here. Okay, next is emergency health, life, safety amendment for GMS and Chatham Elementary for the gas line repairs that we've had. Dave?
You actually have two items to talk about.
The cable's bad.
The first issue was that GMS, we had a five-inch gas main there that, that corroded on the bottom of the pipe, and it was a buried pipe. It came in from the, the gas service on the west side of the building, runs up the west side of the building, and before it comes up the west side of the building, it goes underground for about, less than 80 feet. And it was an emergency, we didn't have a choice in the repair, we were about to be red-tagged, thank you, Betsy. I was able to convince the gas company not to red-tag, it's at this site, they allowed us to keep the gas running until we had to absolutely turn it off. We worked through the night to get this accomplished in very, very difficult conditions. Got it up and running the following day. We went back, rather than steel pipe, we used a very heavy-duty thermoplastic pipe to make that repair. This kind of shows the conditions that we were working in on Saturday.
And I understand you were not feeling well that day, either.
Oh, I had a terrible feeling.
Yeah, and I'm doing it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. That, the schedule on this pipe, that's 600-pound rated pipe, is equivalent to the steel pipe that we replaced. The issue with the steel pipe, I'm sorry.
There's a picture.
Give back the picture, please.
Sure.
Oh. The steel pipe actually has a coating on it, and we, we looked at it, unfortunately, I got there after one of the construction people scraped off the coating, he didn't realize that the coating was what's supposed to protect the pipe. So, I couldn't determine exactly what, what caused the corrosion, but I anticipate that somehow when the contractor placed the pipe, it scraped the coating, allowed water to get to it and corroded the pipe. So, what I'm asking tonight is that you approve the emergency health, life, safety amendment for GMS before we move to Chatham Elementary.
And that was $32,736, is that correct?
Correct. That's an exact.
Okay. Any questions? Now, I need a motion then to approve item one from, from this.
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Uso?
Yes. Okay, item two.
Item two was a gas line that failed Friday afternoon. I wasn't able to convince the gas company not to shut the gas off, luckily it was that intense, so immediately we had to come up with a game plan. We did so, we didn't take out the sidewalk where the old pipe was, was buried, we ran along parallel to the sidewalk, then cut back in against the building. All the old piping runs underneath the ground, underneath the asphalt, all the way around the building, and we decided that was not the direction to go, so we ran as little pipe as we could underneath the ground, because that seems to be where we have all our, our problems. Came up against the building on the 200 wing, up the, up the building, and then crossed the roofline, and we made reconnection at every point, we had to make reconnection. There's actually several hundred feet, I think close to 450 feet of pipe, that we had to lay on top of the building to get the connections all made. It did take quite a bit more time, it wasn't, the material wasn't as expensive, but the labor was, so hence the estimate at this point, because they don't have all the figures back from the contract, of $33,000 worth of expense.
Is that, you confident it's going to be that or under?
It'll be under that.
It'll be, okay. This is not to exceed?
It'll be more like 25, 26.
But this would be not to exceed?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what we just got done doing, is that's a permanent fix, or do you?
Yes.
Okay.[1750.13]
More like 25, 26.
But this would be not to exceed?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we just got done doing, is that's a permanent fix or do you...
Yes.
Okay.
Everything had to be permanent. Gas company won't sign off on a temporary fix.
But at first you had made a temporary fix and then went back last weekend. You'd, you had made, I'm sorry, a GMS, I think is what you were talking about, the last one you just did. A GMS, you had made a temporary fix and then had to go back in again.
We, we made a correction to get us gas back on Friday night. Came back Saturday, was the correct piping.
Right.
Made the, made the correction. And we're not quite finished there, because we've got a concrete cap. We've got to put on, the ground's frozen, at least a foot thick. And we've got to wait for it to solid up before we can pull concrete.
Okay. I just wanted to see, Claire.
Any questions on item two here? Now I need a motion to approve item two that repairs to Chatham Elementary gas line for a cost not to exceed $33,000.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve, and a thank you to Brandon. Call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Jesus?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Are you up?
I...
You got the disposal of property? Okay.
O'Shea told me at the end of December that the Midwest, their exact name is up there, the...
Midwest Missions Distribution Center.
Distribution. It's Abbot Sugar Creek Church. They actually came over to all and wanted to know if we were disposing of all of our bleachers. And while we told them that no, we're not taking out those bleachers, but we are taking out GIS. They would like to be able to have those donated, because they will do something with them and make desks and things like that.
Well, can I address that?
Services if you can.
I'm passing some pictures down here. I, I do volunteer at the Midwest Distribution Center. And what they do is they make desks, as in that first picture, and they will then ship them where they are needed. They disas- make them, disassemble them, and then they are shipped over, usually overseas to poverty, to schools that have a poverty situation. And this is a way for education to give back to education and...
And there's a lot of nice wood over there.
Betsy, can you show that out?
Yeah. Oh, this will go a long way to...
Do they want it all?
Yes, they do. They want it all.
Betsy's got a picture for everybody else that wants to see.
A big bit of it.
Yep.
They're going to take all the wood.
All the wood.
All the wood.
What are we going to do with the steel then?
Steel, it's scrapped up.
Recycle.
That by us.
Do we get this...
This is just, we're just asking permission for them to, to be able to donate that wood.
The wood?
And they'll take care of metal.
There's salvage value in that steel though, right?
That's my understanding.
There's lots.
Once they take it, that's theirs. We don't...
What's that?
He's talking, are you talking about the steel?
Yeah.
It's steel. But it's, O'Shea pulls it out, they, it's their scrap.
Yeah, it's part of their contract.
Yeah. And this stuff would probably go, you know, unless we donated it here, it may end up going in the scrap heap. It may, going in the dumpster.
Exactly.
But these desks will be built by volunteers and then shipped to different locations around the world.
With a lot of scrap.
At no co- actually at no cost also to those other organizations that they get shipped to.
I suppose too.
Any, any questions? Anything else, Jim? Any questions? Need a motion then to approve disposal of property as presented this evening? Thank you, Brandon. In a second. Steve, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Weitzel?
Yes, great.
Yes.
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 Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Jesus?
Yes. Thank you. Next is our financials, our treasures and financial report. And Patrick is...
Patrick is not here, but it's for a very good reason. He had welcomed, he and his wife welcomed their baby boy over the weekend. So he is not here today, but if we have any questions, we can, you know, get those back to him. But, what's that?
Call him.
Yeah. We will not call him. No. We will get him to him, but they welcomed a nine-pound baby, four-ounce baby, Austin, over the weekend. So everybody's doing well.
Good.
So he has a good excuse for not being here.
Any questions on any of those reports?
Rick and Susan, have you seen these and gone through these with him prior to them being released to us?
We didn't talk about them at the Finance Committee meeting, but...
Not prior. I think we can address some of these questions at the next Finance Committee meeting, but I would request that for the February meeting, Patrick just put together a short PowerPoint on audited numbers so that, you know, the board has a good summary of fund balances at July 1, 2014, to see, you know, a summary of income statement for the calendar year July 1, 2012 to 2013. It would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Okay with that then?
Mm-hmm.
This is up for action and we want to delay that till...
No, you can...
Next one, okay. Need a motion then to approve the Financial Treasuries Report as presented this evening?
I make that note.
Board packet. Thank you, Susan. In a second, please.
I'll say.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Jesus?
Yes. Okay. Back to Communications Roundtable. Anybody have...
I do.
Okay.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say thank you to everybody who participated in the evaluation of the superintendent. We had a lot of feedback from the board and from those asked to complete the 360 survey about Carrie and about the board. And I truly appreciate all of everybody's comments. And I was very pleased to see that we had a lot of people with a lot of feedback. And so I'm going to pass these out tonight. And there's a lot of information here, because the people who filled these out had a lot of information to share with us. And I would consider either calling a special board meeting just for the purpose of discussing this, or allotting probably a good amount of time before the next board meeting. So...
You have one for each board member?
I do. I could just take one folder and pass it down.
Now the evaluation discussion from the board would be closed session?
It would be a closed session, yes. And we would discuss it without Carrie present first.
Okay.
And then if the board felt to bring in Carrie at that time, then talk with her or talk with her at another time. Inside that, there are two packets. The top packet is the board results and then the bottom packet, bottom packet is the 360 results.
Okay. Anything else, Lisa? Okay. Yeah, thank you for everybody and your participation in this, your, your work on putting that together.
Is that a date for that or...
Well, we can. You want to do it, how long would you estimate, do you think, Lisa?
It's, we're going to need...
Couple hours?
Probably two hours.
Two hours.
Three hours early to that, I mean.
Okay.
Could we have a special meeting then?
Sure.
That way we won't be pressured.
Yeah, and that would be my preference. And I was kind of looking at maybe Monday, February 10th, depending on what people's schedules look like.
I'm out that day. I know that already. What about the 11th? Let me look here.
I'm okay the 11th.
I'm okay the 11th.
February...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday, the 11th.
Sorry about Monday.
Oh, you know, in my brain, Mondays are board meeting nights, so Mondays are just always. So that's fine.
So we can set it up tentatively for 5 o'clock. Is 5 o'clock good for everybody?
Can we do Wednesday?
Wednesday?
Tuesday?
The 12th?
Uh-huh.
Okay. On the 12th, at 6 o'clock. Okay, 6 to 8, you think, Lisa? Okay. And...
How about this? Could we start, I mean, I'll bring the sandwiches, because I'm afraid Rick's going to be...
No, 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 no.
Okay, you bring sandwiches, I'll bring brownies.
Well...
There we go.
Rick, what's your schedule? 6 o'clock?
On the 11th.
No, on the...
On the 12th. On the 12th.
Yes, I'm fine on the 12th.
So are we doing...
6 or 5.
6 or 5.
Anytime.
Susan and I will take care of dinner.
5 o'clock's good. How's that?
Yeah, how about 5?
Okay, 5 to 7.
We need to...
I'll send out an email.
12.
I'll send out an email.
Okay. We can post it, yeah.
Well, Lisa will send out an email on it. How's that? It's your committee, or your... Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody, I have a couple of things. Anybody else have anything?
Just CC Joe, so she can post it?
On the 12th.
Not mine?
No, no, no. I mean, in Roundtable. In Roundtable. Anybody else have anything else they want to talk about in Roundtable? Okay. We'll jump right into it. Just two things. Number one, that, first of all, you know, with, with board governance, we as board members are one of seven. And we, part of that says that you only make decisions by, as a group, as a group of seven. And I know that Corey Hope was not here at the meeting tonight, and that was because we wanted to kind of streamline things tonight and that. But I know that there's been some communication with Corey, telling him that he doesn't have to be at board meetings anymore. That has come from a board member. And I think that that, that did not go through the Construction Committee. And I think that that's something that needs, that needed to go through the Construction Committee if that was going to happen. And, you know, it, it is something that, it's either going to be a decision by the entire board, or it's going to be a decision by the Construction Committee as to who should represent what groups when they make a presentation to the board. So I just wanted to throw that out and, because that what did not go through the Construction Committee and it did not go through the entire board. So just wanted to throw that out on the table. Any comments or questions?
That was me.
Yes, it was.
I know it was going to cause so much problems, but the first part of my conversation was thank you for doing a very good job. I mean, I read every single line item of all of the reports.
But that's not your decision to make to tell them that he doesn't have to come to the board meetings or not to the board meetings?
It was in here...
Okay. Okay.
But the other half is important.
Well, I understand it.
I cannot, I would just, I wanted to tell and leave a message that...
Well, it confused, it, when you don't go through...
Correct.
Everybody else, then Corey doesn't know what to expect, Dave doesn't know what to expect, nobody else knows what to expect. And that's the way that it probably should be handled in the future. Okay. Second thing is, is that we've been kicking around discussions on Amoresco for months now. And I just wanted to get a sense from the board as to, and this is, you know, we haven't had any dealings with Amoresco for probably three years. They came in, we signed a contract with them. Was it the best contract we could get? I don't know if it was or not. Did we get everything we should get from Amoresco at the time? It would appear that way, but do we know for sure? We really don't. But that's three years ago. And I think we need to look to the future as to what we can do in the future and how we can take care of issues like that in the future, instead of continuing to look at the past and try and, and look at where things went wrong. I mean, we think we know where things went wrong, but I think what we need to do is look to the future. So I guess I'm asking from the board as to what kind of, what we're looking for from our staff or from the board as far as anything that we've got left to do with Amoresco.
I guess that what I would request is, is that there's a summary written and not really, I mean, specifically right now with Amoresco, but with any big project that the district wanted to undertake that's multifaceted and multi-million dollars or that we, or it doesn't even have to be that much, but at least that we get a final report saying, you know, the work that we paid for XYZ was, was completed on these dates. And that our, the appropriate person in the district has signed off on to say that the work was done properly and that was done to completion and the satisfaction. And so you can kind of wrap it up and put, and put it on the shelf, is, is what I would, what I would want to see. You know, it's been really nice with these, with these spreadsheets that Mike Sellers has made for us and he says, you know, this is complete, this is complete. And I think that's been a really nice thing to have. And I, and I know we had something like that when we built GES, but it was such a complicated project that it was really hard to, you know, these are, these spreadsheets are a little bit clearer, just I think we've learned over time. But that would be my expect, or my request, I guess, would be just to have a kind of a wrap-up report.
Kind of going forward, are you talking about future projects and that sort of thing?
Certainly with future projects. And, you know, and I guess Dave can speak to this because something, what Amoresco did would fall underneath us. And if, you know, and for my purposes, if Dave says, "Yeah, they did everything that we contracted with them to do," okay.
Can I just talk to that for just a minute?
Sure.
I'm going to be off in a couple weeks there and do a medical issue. During that period of time, I'm not going to be incapacitated, but I want to be on it. It was my intent to, to put together a report for you during that period of time and explain to you how the decisions were reached, what the goals were, what the end result looked like. So if you give me till next month, I'll have that report ready for you.
Perfect. Thank you.
And it'll explain to you what the decision, if, how the decisions were made and why the verified, measured and verified versus stipulated was used. So at the end of that, end of the report, I think you'll have a better understanding of what performance contracting will and will not do. Give me till February board meeting, I have it.
Okay.
And will it include what was actually done?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Item. And what, and I think there's, there's confusion on performance contracting and how it tracks, how you measure it, and, and what decisions were made upfront in measurement. And I'll provide all that information for you in a very thorough report.
Thank you. And, and we certainly obviously hope that you're, with the procedure that you're having is easily, everything goes well, or with whatever issue that is coming up. And if you certainly need more time, that...
Absolutely.
And I don't know, Teresa, if he's taking medical, can he do that?
We have talked to his doctor.
But I don't know, but we can keep you from it.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
He and I have talked about his medical thing, so.
Okay.
Well, just to come, I, I agree, just not, not on, on that particular subject, but in, in general, for the benefit of all board members and in light of the revolving board, the nature of a board revolves, you know, new members continually coming on who may not have been around when certain contracts or things started before our tenure. So in order to answer questions that may, might come up, if there is a good wrap-up document or a, a schedule, if you, if you will, that, that outlines and that everybody's comfortable with, so we can put it on the shelf and, and move forward would be very helpful.
I'd like to, I'd like to chime in and just say that I, I'm just looking for some clarification. My understanding, it was, it was a 20-year process that we, relationship we got in with Amoresco that we were going to be guaranteed some savings based off the equipment they installed. And we've got, we've got emails and we've got sheets that have been presented in open meetings that show it's a, it's a 20-year process. So why haven't we contacted them in three years?
Contacted Amoresco?
Are we not supposed to be doing something over the 20-year period or 10-year period or...
It's, it's the difference between stipulated and measured and verified.
Okay. So can I...
I mean, let me just suggest this to you.
Just, I'm just looking for some clarification.
Okay. Let me give you a little hint. Measure and verify can cost you up to 15% of the total contract. In this case, that'd be well over $300,000. So we upfront said, okay, because it's the type of contract that we know there's savings when we go from a 40-watt fixture to a 32-watt fixture, we stipulated those savings. Okay? The other piece of that is that throughout the entire district, we replaced almost every fixture or updated every fixture. And we know between from a 750-watt fixture to a 200-watt fixture, there are savings. So we stipulated those savings. We said, yes, we agree upfront between the performance contractor and the district. We know there's savings between a 750-watt fixture and a 200-watt fixture. Okay? So that, because of the difference in the way that the fixture operates, those are stipulated savings. Okay? We, we agreed to agree that, yeah, we're going to see those savings. We also agreed that there's savings, operational savings, we would incur if we changed the fixture. Rather than contracting that up through a contractor, we use Amoresco to replace the fixture. You follow me? So we're incurring savings, okay, by... So, we're incurring savings, okay, by changing the fixture out, going to a better fixture, and we're, we're incurring savings at the district level, because our people are not putting those fixtures in. Relamping, rebalancing, balancing, those are all part of operational savings that we, we agreed to upfront through stipulated savings. Okay, those are not measured and verified, because we chose not to pay the $300,000 plus, which measured and verified costs 15%, up to 15%. Let me say that.
Would that be measure and verify costs over the 20-year life?
That's correct. What that is, is a, is the contractor comes in and physically goes through utility bills, and looks at everything you're using, and he says, you're not, they have the guilty at that point to say that you're not using the building in the way that we stipulated upfront to get the value that, for that year. So, you're not seeing the savings. So, they can say, okay, you're working, you've got the building lights on too long, you've got more performance going on than anticipated, so we can't say that we're going to save you money using measure and verify.
So, this is not a 20-year process with Amaresco? This is not a 20-year relationship with them?
It isn't, it isn't. I mean, when we go out and garner the money, we use their services, they helped us with getting, getting the money. Okay, and we paid them upfront in that first year for their services, or at the end of the project, for their services. The benefit to us, they helped us garner the money.
Build America funds, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
Build America funds.
Build American bonds.
Yes, I believe that was that.
And rebates?
I'm sorry?
Was there rebates available?
Uh, no, I had to bag check for it.
Can you check for us, please?
I will.
And then show us where we approved, the fact that we're not going to ask for any savings after the first year?
Repeat that, please.
I don't ask for any savings. Do we get from who?
You said there was a $300,000 stipulation that we wouldn't...
But it's, it's, if you choose to use measured and verify, that's, someone physically comes out, runs your utilities, they have to be told, that's what they, our expectation.
Can you show me where we approved that thing?
We didn't approve.
No.
We approved stipulation.
Right.
We approved stipulation, see?
In other words...
That's part of the contract.
So, we could have included, we could have, we either approved a contract that was $300,000 higher that had the measure, or we approved a contract that was $300,000 less that was stipulated.
We agreed to agree upfront, because we know that the difference in the product used, say, we went from X to Y, okay?
And then they extrapolated data out over 20 years to get that 20-year total.
Plus your operational costs, plus your, you know, the savings from the insulation, which we would have had it done anyway, because you have to recognize that we had to change from T-12 to T-8, or T-5, or LED, which we used, so...
So, we're not going to have to do anything with these light fixtures for 20 years?
That's not the case.
No.
We have five years of warranty. Okay? Five years of material warranty.
Then we're back to spending labor and material to replace them again?
Well, you're going to be...
If they fail, but not if they don't fail.
Replacing ballast, you're going to be replacing lamps. First part, let me, let me just put to you this one, Barry Woodward. Before we made these changes, that's all we did, ballast and lamp changeup, that's it. There was no, no time, and he was behind on that.
Oh, he's an employee.
Now, I've got him doing other things, which, for five years now, or since the contract ended, or lights were put in, he's been able to accomplish other tasks, because he's not been dedicated to all of that. So, for those, that period of time, you know, what they do, they look at his, the labor savings for us by not purchasing ballast, by not purchasing lamps, and they say, that's a savings to us. They say that the labor saved from not having electricity dedicated to lighting, that's a savings. Okay, and they figure all that in.
So, we haven't bought any lights then, is that correct?
What, the first five years of lamp life is covered under warranty. The first four years of ballast life is covered under warranty. We're at the end of four years.
And have we seen any energy savings?
We don't know.
Stipulated.
Stipulated.
Because how do you measure? Okay, that's, that's the problem.
It's like...
We don't have the tools to measure with. I can show you what we spent, I can show you what, you know, for the entire time of the contract. How do you know about the buildings broadly? That becomes the issue. Someone would have to be there.
Yeah.
Do you follow me?
Yeah. Is it typical for a performance service contract to have stipulated savings?
It's, it's not unheard of if you want to save the measured back, or save the cost of measured and verified.
Do most, I mean, okay, what would you say, the split is 90% measure and verify, 10% stipulate? Do you have any idea what the industry standard is?
Having worked in the field, yeah, you're probably going to see measured and verified in school systems, probably 80% of the time. However, measured and verified is when I have HVAC projects, I have lighting projects, I have building projects. Under performance contracting, you can build entire buildings, complete. You can do it through, because of the way performance contracting is funded, you have 20 years to pay it back, state, you know, they feel that's a, an alternative to architects, engineers, the way we do work currently. I have my own...
Which leads me to a very interesting question. We have 20 years to pay it back, so why was it paid back before even the end of the first year? I mean, that's a very interesting issue.
The district has 20 years to pay the loan back. You can't exceed 20 years on a performance contract?
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Oh, you're saying...
So, we have 20 years to pay it back, and that's...
The maximum.
The contractor expects to be paid at the end of the contract, or...
Not over 20.
End of the job.
Just like any other...
The vendor is paid over 20 years, so...
But we have, we have no way of putting any data together to determine whether or not we got our savings?
Energy savings?
Any savings?
It's, well, yeah, we do. And my intent is to bring that forward, but you're going to have to recognize that there's many things that go into that.
I understand. You know what would help me?
Energy savings is very difficult to track unless you're very specific about how you operate your buildings. You have to be able to guide those who are building owners, or who run the buildings. You've got this many hours to turn lights on, this many hours to use the air conditioners. If you exceed that, okay?
Then...
Then you're, you're out of, outside the contract. And in some cases, the performance contractor would walk away, or he would say, you're locked in, and you can no longer use, but this many KDA per month from this period forward. It depends on the kind of contract you want to get involved with. So, so we, based on the type of construction, because it's all lighting, based on, we know we're going to get energy savings because of the difference in LED versus, you know, the halogen lights, okay? We know there's savings there. I have measured the savings physically. I know it went from 20 amps to 9 amps, so I can say, yeah, I'm seeing savings. Can I say that I'm not using more energy? I can't say that. Okay, because think, think of what we've done in the past five years. We've added equipment, we've modified buildings, we've said, we're not introducing ventilation air at the rates that we needed to be. Okay, so, guess what? I'm adding more cost because I'm taking the school back to the standard it should be in the first place. You follow that? So, so can I, can I measure the energy savings? I can when I stipulate it, because I know the difference between the performance.
Right, there is, uh, there is a, um, there is a requirement in the contract that the district is supposed to give 30 days' notice to Amaresco if we make, if changes are made. So, even though your energy consumption may change over time, and it go up, if the...
Well, think of it this way also, because you've got 15-degree weather now.
Correct.
Below 15. You know, summertime, two years ago, we were what?
A hundred.
Longest drought in history, right Steve? I mean, that's a 100-year drought. So, so all those factors play in. Not only does it, the length of the duration, the operation of the building, because we got special events going on, you also have to look at all that bin data that's calculated for, for weather, okay? In addition to how you operate your building. So, that's why we don't use measured and verified. When we know what our savings look like under stipulated savings with lighting systems, would I suggest this for HVAC programs? No. I would say measure and verify. Because I, I can't measure and verify HVAC at performance, because there are so many variables. Like, it's like GES with the problem we had there. Okay, we know we're paying more, but guess why? We've got some engineering issues upfront, and we've got to get those correct. And that would impact that HVAC, and that's why I want to measure and verify. We're into resistance usage, stipulated is...
Okay.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Yes.
When you do your presentation, can you invite somebody from Amaresco to come and help explain it to us also?
I don't think, we don't have a relationship with Amaresco anymore. And I don't, I don't think we need to bring them in. I wouldn't want to bring them in.
What would be the benefits?
Yeah, what, what kind of benefit would we...
So that they could clarify it, just to some of the new board members?
Clarify in what respect? Do we, what are we going to clarify that Dave wouldn't be able to clarify and...
I don't know. I think we need to bring him in, or somebody, and just have him go over this, so I can understand what we got.
But what don't you understand?
I think Dave's report is going to help us...
Yeah, I think so too.
You want to bring him in for real.
Why don't you allow...
I just want him to explain what we've got, or submit the report to you.
You see holes in the report that you need clarified? If I can't clarify them, I'll go to Amaresco. I have a relationship with one person there. I wasn't real satisfied with some of the things they did.
So, when we entered into that contract, we had a choice, whether to do the verify...
Measure and verify.
Measure and verify, or stipulate.
Exactly.
And we chose to stipulate.
We chose stipulated because of the type of work that they were assigned.
Because it was light. If we had done air conditioning, we would have gone to the, the...
What happened was, Amaresco was handed $21 million worth of work, and said, here, go forth and give, put us a program together, tell us what we need. After the district, through their action teams, pulled together all the reports, handed over to them, we had roofing issues, Amaresco was going to take care of, we had HVAC issues, which Amaresco was going to take care of. I was handed that back to them, and I said, no, we're not. What fits performance contracting, in the case of all town schools, was an electrical project. Because I knew I would have to measure and verify, and when you talk about $21 million worth of work, take that times 15%, I'm not going to give them 15% to do that.
Plus, you were able to do much of that yourself.
Well, that, all of that was done because the HVAC and the roofing was not done by them, it was only the lighting.
It was out of their contract.
The only thing that was done was the lighting. And as Dave said, you can go in and take a look, it's just like at home. You put a 60-watt bulb in, or you put a 100-watt bulb in. You take the 100 out, and you put a 60 in, you know you're going to have X amount of savings over the period. Now, if you leave that, that 100-watt light on for two hours, and you leave that 60-watt light on for four hours, you're going to have more, your, your energy savings isn't going to be there. It's, your energy savings would be there, because if you'd had that four, that 100-watt bulb on for four hours, it would cost you more as opposed to the 60. So, it's...
And you, and you could tell people in your house, don't turn on that light, but then you've got the grandkids in, who come and turn on the light, and leave it on all day, which is something you didn't have control.
Well, you know, you go by any one of our schools, probably from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, and the lights are on, because there's something going on. I mean, I came by the middle school and the intermediate school tonight, and there were, both parking lots were full of, full of cars over there for something going on. So, you know, and maybe three years ago, that wasn't necessarily the case. But because of things that the district offers now, it's, we're using more energy, but there's no, the control, we're saving money overall, because if we had the old stuff in still, we'd be spending more money, as opposed to the new stuff. So, so, Dave, you'll have something for us, you think, in February?
I will have a report together, where we'll detail how we came to stipulate versus verify.
Okay.
Identify the number of fixtures that we, we're talking about, the difference in performance of the fixtures, how, how that impacts energy usage, and why we, why we chose to go with stipulate. Again, I had more of a vote, I probably would have used the vote.
But there, there was a decision to go with stipulate versus measure? And where, where was it, who would have made that decision?
Did you say that?
We, I mean, the board approved the contract, so it would have come through the board. The board approved the contract.
To go stipulate?
As the contract was presented to us, it was, it was...
Among all the details in the contract that was presented, stipulate was one of the things presented in the contract. So, it was a whole contract that we...
Right, right.
Is there a video on that presentation?
I, I don't know if we got a date.
Could I, could we take a look at it sometime?
He puts it on.
It's on, it's online.
He puts it on GCN. How far back do you go, Ryan?
Well, the server's not looking for that, but I have that, just something on the data I can prep on.
Okay.
And just for the record, I doubt that they talked about the...
No.
Measure and verify.
And, and just because we voted on it that night, doesn't mean that there wasn't other information in previous board meetings to that also, when we talked, when it was presented to the board, so...
It may not have been a good contract, but it wasn't illegal.
No, no. I mean, you know, all those things were reviewed by legal counsel, and...
The contract came forward correctly. It follows the guidelines of the state. It adheres to all the technical requirements. I watched how the contract came together to make sure that. It hit the memo.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dave. Carrie, anything?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Future board meetings, you see our future board meetings here, board meeting February 24th, there's an Abe Lincoln Spring Dinner on February 25th, and then March 10th, we have our personnel meeting, which is our annual, the first of our two meetings in March at Personnel. Well, first meeting in March is Personnel, and then the second one, we vote on, on the recommendations. And then the other meetings that we will have through the month with negotiations, and, and now the superintendent. So, anything else? Now, any motion to adjourn? Oops, I'm sorry, I've got one more thing. Anybody here want to talk to us about any agenda topic? Okay, then, any motion to adjourn? Okay, then, any motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.